The view will be of this table. There will not be the audience, but we will pick up your voices on the recording. So you don't have to worry about the phone being turned around under the field, okay? There's some handouts if you haven't got them up on the table out there. What we're prepared tonight for is to have a hearing on the possible withdrawal from RSU3. By law, we had to have a petition with at least 52 signatures on it in order to go to the select people to ask them to put together a meeting for withdrawal. And before you have that withdrawal meeting, you have to have a public hearing 10 days before and have it notarized, and we have done that. You want to put up the ballot?
The ballot?
Yep, please. Got two or three things, two or three things to do, and then we'll just open it up to questions because I think that's the quickest way to do it. This is what the ballot will be on March 1st. Do you pay your father a petition for withdrawal for the board of directors?
No, sorry.
Here's an iPhone webcam. Authorizing withdrawal from making the spend up to $20,000 authorized municipal offices, the town of Brooks may issue notes and the name of the town in a note will not exceed $20,000 for this purpose. And yes, we will continue to go through the withdrawal process, and no, we will stop the withdrawal proceedings. This is just the first step. If we were to vote on March 1st to continue withdrawal, we would have another meeting sometime probably in November, and then you would actually vote to withdraw or not to withdraw. And the thing about that is, this vote here on March 1st is a simple majority. If you had 11 people at the meeting and six said yes and five said no, then we would continue withdrawal. But the big meeting that we would probably have in November is a whole different deal, okay? Right now, the town of Brooks has 518 votes at the last gubernatorial election. So we would have to have 260 people actually vote in order to make it a valid vote. And that would be, we had 518, we'd be 260 votes, and that's a combination of yes and no together. And if we don't get that 260 votes, then it's a no. So we have a place to go, that we have a difference of opinion of what we want to do. Also, at that meeting that we have in November, we will have a document of agreement of all sorts of different things to look at in order to decide whether you want to withdraw or not. Go back to the first. And one of the couple of things that we are looking at, why withdrawing? Lack of confidence in RSU3 educating our children, communication, process RSU3 board to close Moss School, and variability in test scores. And this was passed out by RSU3, and if you look at them, if you look at your handouts, I won't necessarily read them, and what it shows is that we are going to put students at Mountview and basically all the other test scores of all the other elementary schools other than the one math score at Moss are all higher than Mountview. So we're testing better in our smaller schools than we would in our larger schools. Yeah, go ahead. And these are the step process. If you want to read the law, it's Title 28, 1466. And we haven't put it on the website, but we will after this meeting. So you can go off the website, the Brookstown website, and read this. And I won't read all of this, but it's a petition to withdraw signed by at least 10% of the voters, and we have completed that task. And then we went to the select people, and the hearing we're having right now is the hearing before the special town meeting, which is 10 days before March 1st. As I said before, just a simple majority. What would happen if we voted yes to continue the voting process of withdrawing? A full member committee would be created, a school board member, a municipal officer, a committee member, meaning a committee member of this committee here, and a general public. And what they would do would be put together an agreement with RSU3 on what we would do to withdraw. And if you want to look at other districts that have looked at that, the town of Dixmont, a few years ago, and if you can go on that website and find that, they had a withdrawal agreement between RSU19, which is the Newport district, and the town of Dixmont withdrawal committee in a document of 27 pages of all the things that are required in order to withdraw. So it's a process that's not just going to be, we're going to withdraw, yes, and go ahead and do it. It's a very complicated and time-consuming situation. One of the things that this will do if we continue to vote yes on March 1st is this goes to the commission of education, and she tasks this committee to come up with that agreement. And as I stated earlier, the withdrawal agreement must be, final referendum must be 50% vote, total vote, yes and no. If you had, and that would be by secret ballot at the town office. Next one, please. Consideration in the process is students transition to another district, create our own district, K through 12 local environment, K through 5, local environment, or tuition, 6 through 12. Cost considerations that will be developed in this agreement would be cost withdrawal, debt service, administration costs, rest of tuition, and transportation costs. Next one, please. And we put together a Brooks assessment of the last two, four years, and the state share, and the town share has definitely gone up, and then the total. And this is taken from the RSU3 budget books. So as you can see, the state share has gone down, and our share has gone up $180,000 in those four years. Go back up that one more, sorry. Right now, the town of Brooks and the state money totals $2.2 million, $95,000. That's what we are putting into education with the state allocation for 100, I think it's 101 students. Special town meeting, March 1st, 1:00 p.m., right here. We'll have this ballot, and you do the check, yes or no. It'll be open to discussion at that day too. That day also, I should say, not too. What we'll do is continue work with RSU3 board of directors and other appropriate obtained information, continue the process on the state requirements beyond what we're going to do with withdrawal, as we're going to look at, as this committee was put together, to continue to assess the cost of the Moss school building. In fact, we have a meeting that we're trying to schedule during February vacation with an architect, engineer, with electrician, plumber, that will go through this building and see if we can come up some ideas of what the status of this building is. And the upkeep preparing the decision of either keeping this school open or closing this school or going somewhere else, or staying where we are. So that takes care of our slide. I guess at this point, we'll open it up, get any questions? Yes, sir?
In a previous meeting, it was mentioned, perhaps with authority or by rumor, that the cost of bringing the building up to code would amount to about $2 million. Do you know what the source of that information was and who would be responsible for having claimed that that was the estimate?
The estimate that was claimed was Harriman Associates did a district-wide assessment of all, can't get it out right there, there's a whole bunch of things. I believe it's on the website, RSU3 website, and basically each school was like $2 million to bring it up to code. Each school, Moss, Monroe, Walker, Troy, and even Mountview had some estimates of even more than that to bring that up to code.
Zero surprise to this, zero surprise to this old man.
Okay, well, we wouldn't surprise him.
If I might add, one of the reasons that we want to take an engineer through the building with us when we do the tour is that if the town of Brooks were going to take the building back, then we need to know what it would cost to be able to convert it to commercial uses. Because I don't think the town can take it back if we can't get it to generate enough income to pay for itself. So an engineer going through the building would be able to see things that might meet code for educational purposes, but might need to be upgraded or changed for commercial uses.
So the Harriman, permission to ask another question?
Sure.
So the Harriman analysis was specific to the school as the building or complex of buildings as it would pertain to keeping it as a school?
Yes. And what I just want to make a comment is that before, and how we, we will initially led to believe that as soon as this process went through, that the school, RSU3, would probably offer the school building back to the town of Brooks to decide whether we wanted or not. At this particular moment, that is in flux, whether they will actually offer the building back to us. How?
Well, I worked as an electrician for quite a while, and I've worked in the state for 27 years. If it's up to code, it's up to code. If it's not up to code, it would have been said it wasn't up to code in that report. The code for electrical is code for electrical. You can't change it. If they want to, if somebody wants to come in and buy this for a commercial purpose, they would have to be basic on what they wanted to build here, or what they wanted to use it for, and then it would have to be changed to that particular thing. You can't have it for multi-things. If, right now, this is up to code. So if you bought, got the building and you wanted to sell it, you would sell it as a building that is up to code. If they want to come in and do something else in the building, say make a restaurant, they're going to have to come up to restaurant code, okay? Or if they're going to go to another thing.
That's one of the reasons we want to look at, make sure that we understand what is available to us.
But why waste that money when it's already been, when it's been done and it's up to code when we get it? Why do we, why do we want to come in and redo something and waste the money on that when it's already up to code? And we can sell a building as up to code the way it is. If somebody wants to do something else with it, let them do something else with it.
It won't be just electric code, it'll be plumbing.
Is the plumbing failing now? Was the plumbing up to code when they did this?
I'd have to go back through and look to see what they asked to do.
Well, if it's up to code, it's up to code.
Well, one thing we also will look at is handicapped accessibility and things of that nature.
Why do we care?
Pardon?
Why do we care? If the building is up to code, we sell it the way it says, as the building is up to code according to the district on this survey right there.
If I might add, I think the poster child for redeveloping elementary school buildings is in Orland. And Orland has their elementary school, they've got a restaurant in it, they've got some counseling services in it, they've got a computer geek in it, they've got several meeting rooms for classrooms, they play pickleball in the old gymnasium. What we're looking at is if that opportunity presented itself here, what would the difficulties be in redoing one of those classrooms for a restaurant? What would you need to do then?
Why?
Those are the kinds of things that we want to look at to see if we as a town want to take it back.
Why do we care?
I think the question that's being asked is simply put, that if the town's keeping it and we want to develop it and rent the space out, then we would need to know that. If the town is keeping it and selling it, then it's up to the developer to develop what they want it to. It doesn't matter to me what the developer wants to do with the building. It's the person buying its responsibility to make the modernization to what they want it for.
That's correct, but if you're going to set a price on that building, you need to know whether it's a walk-in turnkey thing that you can do it if you want it.
No, you don't. Actually, you don't. You don't.
Yes, you do.
No, because what happens is there's an inspection, there's an inspection, and then the inspection brings things up, and then you can negotiate that. So why are we, why are we wasting money? The Harriman report outlines what's wrong with the building already. You have it right there, so why are we wasting more money to have another engineer come through and tell us what that report already tells us?
There are two people in the audience that think we should not do that. We'll take you under advisement. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Have you all thought forward on if we withdraw, what would your standpoint be on the at least three, possibly more, children who live right here within your town that are placed out of district for schooling?
That would be part of the educational process that we do in the agreement.
It's an expensive process.
Yes, it is.
That district three covers right now.
Absolutely.
My child's one.
Could be $80,000, $100,000, could be numerous dollars to do that.
It is, it's a lot.
Absolutely.
And so you, at the same time, is budgeting, you have to budget for transportation, like for instance, my son travels an hour and a half one direction for schooling every day.
Yep, and the.
And I got to tell you, I'm nervous that the town would take this and then run with it, and my kid's left without a sufficient education because he can't be educated in a regular classroom.
I agree, 100%.
He cannot be. I feel nervous.
In the agreement that we were put together with RSU3, we have an educational plan for every student in this town, whether it be here or some other district or outside where the child goes now. We do not know how many special ed kids we have in this town because we haven't been given that information. In honor for us to get that information to withdraw, we would have to go through the process, and you would see exactly what educational process would be for your child.
Most of that information is listed on the main educational website. You can see basically by town and district how many special education students are within a district.
But it doesn't specifically say it from town of Brooks.
I could pull up very close to that, yes.
Pardon?
I could pull up very close to that information.
Good, well, very close.
I've had these conversations with the special education board for District 3, and one of my main arguments was, you have X amount of students and X amount of ed techs, and why can't we provide in the District 3 for this one kid? Because the ratio is about 2.5 kids per one ed tech that works for the district, and not every kid requires a one-on-one. So regardless, I do know the facts of how many kids are in the district and probably based on how many ride van to one specific school, I could tell you how many are within the town.
Well, in this process, every student will be taken care of in the agreement, and you can see exactly how we're going to educate all of our students in the town of Brooks. And in November or whenever the ballot, you could either vote it up or down, one or the other. Yes, sir?
So you guys are asking us to commit to withdrawing from the district, but you don't have any idea how you're going to provide education for the kids?
Right now, sir, according to the way the rules and things are in there.
I understand the rules and what you're saying. What I'm saying is that you guys have had over a year as a committee to go over information, and all you've done is stick your head in the sand and fight against the district to not close the school. So in one of your meetings, you had reached out to a realtor. What was, what were the results of the inquiry to the realtor of the possibilities for this building being a commercial space?
The realtor said to us that they needed to come in the building and look at the building before they would give us any comment. Back to what you just said about us having our heads in the sand, I appreciate that very much, sir. We haven't had this committee since August of this last year, so we haven't been a whole year.
A committee, but as a group.
No, what, oh, no, 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 no. You made a statement, sir.
Well, I apologize, my dates were off, but the group has been meeting a lot longer than that timeframe, and the whole purpose of the group was solely to stop RSU3 from closing the school. Am I wrong? What have you done, what have you done that is not, is not directed specifically at closing the school? Let me ask you that.
We were looking at everything involved from keeping the school open, withdrawing the district, doing all those things, and that's what this committee is charged to do, sir. And that's what we're looking at. And if you, and this group of people don't want this to continue, then.
I don't.
Pardon?
I don't.
Well, that's one, that's your, you're entitled to that vote, sir. On March 1st, if you come into this school building and vote no.
Why isn't, why isn't the meeting being held the same day as the actual town meeting? So we can have a more robust.
Because the selectmen decided that this is a very important issue and need to be by itself.
Can they change that and move it to the same day as the town meeting so that we can get more people here at the same time? Again, my, my point of view is we're asking people to commit to two different Saturdays when we're already having a town meeting. So why don't we just have the meeting on the same day as the town meeting so we actually get more people in here? You're going to get less people in here on a random Saturday 10 days from now to vote than you would on your regular town meeting. So why don't we just get more people here so you get a better idea of what the town actually wants? Or we could just do a survey and see how many parents or people actually want you to continue.
At this point, the selectmen have already stated.
Can they change that?
Pardon?
Can they change that?
I don't believe so. The warrant has been put out, this hearing is 10 days before that, at least 10 days before that meeting, and it stands.
Well, we can have another meeting, and then the warrant can be changed. If it's only 10 days, the town meeting is not till, what, the 20, what? Anybody help me out here? Third Saturday of March, so we have more than 10 days till then, so we can't change it.
That's your opinion. Anyone else? Lady behind me. Yes, please.
So are you telling us that before we actually do a full quick vote in November that says yes or no, we want to pull out, that we will have specific numbers that tell us how much the taxpayer they're going to pay, how kids are going to be taken care of, and you're going to give us the full scope of all that information?
That's my understanding of what the agreement will be, yes.
You'll have a mill rate increase.
Pardon?
You'll have a mill rate increase for me.
You had yours, ma'am.
So I am a parent of two children who went to this school. They are now in Mountview, one is in the middle school and one is in the high school. And I have questions from them wanting to know, why are you using NEA test scores which are not graded and actually cause anxiety and do not show a true representation of our children's abilities? I have, my high schooler is in all college courses next year. My middle schooler is in advanced math. They are not failing. This school system is not failing. And from what I understand from one of our school board members, if we withdraw from RSU3, my children will be withdrawn from RSU3. They will not be allowed to go to Mountview, which is not okay with me, so I will not be voting for that.
That's something that would be decided in the agreement. At this point, if we were to withdraw from the district, your children could go to Mount, I'll use Mountview, RSU3, for a year, it stays in the law that they could go there.
One year?
Pardon?
One year?
Initially, they have the ability to go for a year, okay? We will know whether we're going to be a municipal school district, whether we tuition our kids out, whether we educate them here or not. So we could tuition them to Mountview, and they could go to Mountview, yes. They would have.
So why?
Sir?
No, I want the answer to that too. I do too. I would like the answer to that too.
What's that?
Why would we want to tuition our children out of the district and just to put them back in the same exact school they would be going to anyways?
That would give us people choice of where they wanted to go, whether they wanted to go to Belfast, Siskiyou, Hammond, Newport, wherever they wanted to go if we were to tuition those kids.
As a parent, I can get what's called a superintendent's agreement and send my child to any neighboring district as long as the superintendent wants to take them. So all of us have that choice already. Every one of us do.
If you can get that agreement.
But it's not that hard to get anymore.
Let me just, I'll get to how.
This is a comment for which there is absolutely no answer, but none of us know what's going to happen in terms of federal support for education if the federal department of education is closed. And that seems to be one of the goals by our current president is to close that department. We don't know where money will be coming from. Some people have suggested in the administration that the states who have the most young children should get them away, help, to remain in the old state. So where's that going to be? I just throw that out there to add to the bar. I don't expect an answer from anybody.
How, go ahead now.
Well, I look at this situation, spending this $20,000, it's just like the situation where Mr. Quimby wanted high-speed internet, which is going to be phased out pretty soon anyways because they're not doing underground cables anymore, everything's going to be going satellite. So that was a going to be boondoggle waste of money, and this one is another one as far as I'm concerned. They need to dig into it, and they don't need to spend $20,000 or $40,000 for a new report when there's one sitting on the table.
The $20,000 would not be for that.
Better than satellites, do you know anything about that?
No, it'd be for another report. And why do we need another report when we got one? This is just redundant stupidity.
$20,000 would, up to $20,000 would put together the agreement of withdrawing from RSU3 and how we're going to provide education to these kids.
Well, you know what you're doing. You're driving people like me out of the town, and I'm fed up with it, I'll tell you right now. My taxes went up $700 a year, and everybody in my neighborhood went up that much, and you keep spending money and spending money. I understand, I want the money to go on roads. I don't want it to go for some stupid thing that we don't, we've already got a, no, I'm just getting upset, but we've already got a report right there. Why spend $20,000 or whatever it takes more to get another report the same way when we need the money in roads? We need the money in better ditching, we need the money in a lot of other things.
Well, we hit it. Thank you, Hal. Yes?
Do we know how much it'll cost to have the engineer come in to the townspeople? You're talking about having an engineer next week come in, how much is that going to cost?
If we were to have that engineer come in, they would put together a report for $1,500. And we've had that engineering firm before, Plymouth Engineering, they're based in Newport right now. Yes, ma'am?
So this might be just a basic question that has already been answered, I'm sorry I was about five minutes late. So is the idea of withdrawing so that we have the possibility of, if we can get this building back, that we can continue to have? Okay. Okay. Okay, so pretty basic question that may have been answered already, I'm sorry I was five minutes late.
Could you stand up and address the audience, please? Thanks.
So is the idea behind withdrawing from the district so that if we can get this building, that we could continue to have school here in Brooks? And then the idea would be also to possibly help fund that by using the building in a multi-use way, and that's why we would need the assessment on whether that could be done? Is that what we're talking about?
Basically, what we're talking about is this withdrawal has a time factor in it, so many days to do this, so many, like 90, 90 days to get the agreement, 30 days thirty days to do this, and thirty, so in order for us to withdraw from, for the people of the Town of Brooks to have the option to withdraw, we have to do that right now. Because in order to get through all the timelines, to vote in November, the big vote, meaning that you have to have 260 years, no votes to continue, in order for us to withdraw from the district in the June of 2026. If we don't meet that deadline, it would be June 2027 before we withdraw. Now, if your people don't, if Town of Brooks decide they don't want to withdraw, they wanna continue what we're doing, then we're gonna continue to look at the uses of this building, whether we get it back or not. One of the things that, that, that the district said in order to close the building, they had a lack of need, okay? Well, in the December, January meeting, I think it was, the superintendent of schools says they may put students in this building.
Would you like to clarify what kind of students that is?
Special needs children.
Okay, so it's not regular students?
I consider that.
I just don't want anybody in the audience to be misled, so I just wanted to make sure you clarified what type of students.
Should that make a difference?
Actually, it does.
Well, enlighten, enlighten me. Sorry, I'm, I apologize.
Well, I mean, Ray would like to, I mean, maybe he can, but I can as well. It's up to them.
Regular, uh, regular ed students, special ed students, they're all students. Doesn't make any difference what you classify them as. They're students that we're looking at that will be coming back to this building.
Can I clarify that, though?
Sure, go ahead.
Because that's, that's, in my opinion, that's misleading statement, because if they were to, if they were to use this building to, for special ed, what's happening is, they would be, the, the plan would be to bring our special ed students back into the district and house them here, and then to bring students from other districts back in here at about a cost of somewhere between $50,000 to $100,000 per student. So therefore, we bring our students back and we look at saving money, we look at bringing other students in, which we then bring in revenue to the district for the use of the building. So there's a huge difference between whether it's used for special ed or for not, based on revenue and cost.
That, that goes to the situation, how are we gonna have those students, and do, and do we have programs for those students, and do we have teachers to teach those?
Well, if not, and the towns, the town has to send kids out for that, it's $100,000 a kid. I mean, what, again, I go back to what's my mill rate gonna be? Because the reality is, that's what it comes down to for a lot of us. There's a lot of people in this town who don't have a lot of money, and a, a three percent mill rate means a, a, a choice between taxes and medicine, or taxes and food, or taxes and heat.
Mill rate, can't give you an answer on that until we run numbers to come up there. I can say to you, sir, that the mill rate, if you continue with RSU3, is gonna go up too. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, maybe I'm not understanding. The school district has already stated that they are going to close the Moore's down, correct?
The school board voted to close Moore's School, yes.
Okay, so it's already closing, there's an end date?
June, June thir, June 30, supposedly. I'll let you continue, just a second.
So what, what are we withdrawing from if we've already been closed?
Well, withdrawing from the, from RSU3 district.
So?
They want, they want Brooks to be a separate district.
Sir, excuse me.
But, but doesn't RSU3 own this building?
Pardon?
Doesn't RSU3 own this building?
Yes, they do. Yep.
So it doesn't matter what happens in this building, if RSU3 wants to bring in kids, whether they're regular students or special ed?
RSU3, RSU3 has closed this building for no, for no educational purposes. They closed this building.
But you just said that they were gonna bring students back in.
They would have to reopen that, that building. They would, they would have to make a vote at the school board level to reopen this building. And if they did that, then the situation that they, the information that they sent to Augusta to have approved to close this building is no longer correct. All the money that supposedly this was gonna save by closing this building in Walker is no longer valid. They claimed that we were gonna save like $950,000 to close this building and the Walker building.
But there is that clause where, when they close it, they, originally, we're supposed to return it to the town, right?
They, they indicated, but by law, they don't have to.
Return the building?
The building.
To the town.
Correct.
Originally.
So, that's what was, made the statement, but by the law, they do not have to do that. They did not make a vote at RSU3 to ask us to return the building to Town of Brooks. Yes, sir?
Wait, wait, maybe I missed it somewhere. We just spoke of the engineer coming in and costing $1,500 approximately for the, their report. What is the $20,000 for?
That's for the process of going, put this agreement together, legal, legal fees and all the things that, it could cost us $10,000, it could cost us $20,000, some school district has spent even more than that. I just took the, a medium number and put that in there. It says up to $20,000.
Okay.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, that's fine, as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm in this committee, we will pitch out every penny that we can and not spend that money.
Would that $20,000 include the educational planning process?
Yes. If, if you look at, if you go online and look at RSU19's, and on our Dixmont withdrawal, it has all the agreement in there of where the children are gonna be educated, how they're gonna be, what it's gonna cost, what, how, the transportation, if, if Dix, if Dixmont was to withdraw from the district, it even says that they will get three buses back to RSU19. All of that material is, all of that agreement, which would be before the November vote, to either do it one way or the other. Uh, Mike?
Okay, so, maybe I'm, if I missed anybody, I'm sorry. But what we're looking at, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, are two separate issues. One is, the school, you know, is being closed, and whether or not the district is gonna give it back to us or not. The withdrawal has nothing to do with this school. Withdrawal is to leave RSU3 and either create our own school district, where we would need a school, or align ourselves with another school district like Belfast or Seersport, and so some of the two closest ones, two groups. Am I correct in that?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So, just when, when you're asking questions about the school, the school is a totally separate issue.
The school building.
The building itself, right, is a totally separate issue than the withdrawal process, which is what we're, the information that this committee is supposed to be giving tonight is about the withdrawal.
Could I ask you one question about that?
Sure.
If this district decided that they weren't gonna give the town this building, where are we gonna, and we withdraw from the district, then are we gonna have to build a new school?
That was my next question.
Yes, and, and actually, I was thinking about that, well, if we don't get the school, where, where would they go? But we don't know, because the district hasn't decided yet, as far as I know, whether or not we are getting the school, or they're gonna keep the school.
To, to answer part of that, Howard, in the deed that, that the select people in the Town of Brooks gave the district way back in 1965, there's a reverter clause in there that says that once this building is no longer used as a school, and RSU3 closes school, it automatically goes back to the town. That's a legal question.
Doesn't it say educational purposes?
Excuse, sir?
No, I'm just, I'm asking it clear.
No, no.
I, I, I looked at your, I looked at the meeting minutes, and in the meeting minutes, it said educational purposes. So there's a difference between school and educational purpose. I just wanna make sure that, that we're, we're using the exact verbiage that's in the deed. What does the deed specifically state?
School.
The deed says school. So why do your meeting minutes that I've been reading say educational purposes?
Educational purpose, as far as I'm concerned, is a school.
Okay, that's why I was confused. So if the meeting minutes were more clear, then I wouldn't have asked the question.
And I have been, I have been told or suggested that that was an improper thing, and that's why I responded to Howard's school.
Okay, perfect.
Okay? But you'd have to have a court of law tell you whether you had that reverter clause was, was good enough, okay? Yes, ma'am?
So I guess my question would be, we're having engineers come in and check the school, and what potentially could be done, whether it's commercial or what the town would do for it? But we don't even know if we're getting the school back.
That's correct.
So we're spending $1,500, I didn't put in the cart before the horse, because we don't even know if the school's gonna give us the building back, but we're getting another report, when we don't know that answer.
Well, I, I can, I can answer for myself, I'm not gonna answer for the rest of the committee, okay? We're, we're a committee of five, okay? From what I'm hearing from people here, they don't wanna spend that money. So as far as I'm concerned, I, and I'm gonna speak in for myself, that my suggestion is we don't have that engineering and, and spend that $1,500. I listen, I listen to, my tax dollars go to this district also, okay? Lisa, go ahead, then.
I, I have two questions. Uh, so the first one is, when will we know if they're gonna give it back to us?
The timetable has not been given us. We asked that question the other, a month ago, and the answer was, we don't know.
So you want us to vote on March 1st to give you $20,000, which is part of my second question, is where does that come from just before we have the town meeting? Um, is that just gonna have to be thrown into the budget coming up, and?
That'd be part of the budget at, at town meetings, yeah.
Okay, so those people that come to town meetings, they, they've already lost their vote on that $20,000, uh, because a handful of people came on March 1st and said, yep, we wanna spend it. Is that correct?
I, I don't know if I can answer that, being legal 100%. It's a possibility at town meeting, you probably could, uh, eliminate that, because you have the power to do lots of things at town meeting. I, I can't answer that.
But I, I, I'm with you.
I know what you, I know what you're saying.
By putting the cart before the horse. It seems like we need to know before we, and I understand that $20,000 is the big picture, and it could be less, and I know you're cheap, and that you will do everything you can, so beat that while I'm down, I appreciate it.
Nope, cheap's the best word.
But it's no money, and it's still tax money.
It, it sure is, it sure is.
So, you know, we're all concerned about putting that cart before the horse and saying, okay, you can spend all this money, but we don't even know if we're, if we're gonna come that far.
All I'm doing is, is following the laws, okay? At, at this point. At, at the Mass Trust meeting, if you decide not to withdraw, then we don't do anything with $20,000. And from what I'm hearing about spending $1,500 for an act, architectural engineer, is a no-go either, as far as I'm concerned, unless a lot of other people jump up there and say, go ahead and spend it, and I, I don't see that happening at this particular moment. Yeah?
So have any, um, looking to the legal verbiage of the deed, and whether the Town of Brooks can force an answer over the district?
We have briefly, uh, looked at our legal, uh, people from Jensen Brothers, Bad, and they have given us a preliminary opinion that it could go either way, okay? The way I read it, okay, the way you might read it, somebody else read it, or somebody else other than myself, make that clarification. Sir?
Attorney's talking to you now.
I'm sorry. Say again?
He's just lying.
You have your hand up, I.
Oh, yes, I'd like to mention that, uh, architects are not necessarily engineers, engineers are not necessarily registered professional engineers. You just said architectural engineer, if you'd like to define that term, it would help enlighten me. And $1,500 to get any kind of a registered professional engineer in any state of the union is darn cheap these days. A registered professional engineer, if they really know what they're doing, and unless they wanna give the town a gift, it's like $200 to $500 an hour. So what are you gonna get for $1,500? I'd like to see a very high-resolution image of, of all the items that such an engineer as you're talking of, because I think $1,500 is a drop in the proverbial bucket when it comes to professional consulting. And the reason you do that is because even if you sell a building as is, it's such a litigious society, and becoming more so with every breathing moment, that dollars to donuts, or the modern equivalent is, somebody who feels they've been shorted in a deal is gonna come back with three times the amount of lawyers that you have, and they're gonna make a big deal out of something that's missing, or wrong, or broken, or has been overseen for some reason. And I speak with some, with some, uh, non-professional experience, because I've been doing my own legal work since I was a teenager. And I have seen all sides of this stuff, from town, small, small towns, like we live in here, all the way to very large municipalities, and I will dare to say that I even defended myself for two and a half years against the Archdiocese of Boston, a corporation sole, and came out of that having zero summed a total of probably close to half a million dollars in, in probable liabilities for all parties. And I wish I could do something here, except I never did do law school formally, but the bottom line is, so you got, you got the message, though.
I'd like to answer your question. Plymouth Engineering has architects certified and engineers that are certified. They're a full-service, uh, company. They have done work for the Town of Brooks, they've done work for school districts, so they do have the, the ability to, to be certified and do all of the things.
Certified registered professional engineer.
And that's who you're using is Plymouth, P-L-Y-M-O-U-T-H, Plymouth? That's who you'd be using?
Plymouth Engineering.
All right, right on.
They're in, I believe they've moved from, from Plymouth, and their office actually is in, out in Newport, I believe, at this point. I see a hand way over.
Can you explain what the process would be if we?
You're gonna have to speak up, man.
Can you explain what the process would be if we were joining, like, the Belfast district or another district?
I'm not quite, I didn't quite hear what you're saying.
What would the process be if we did join Belfast or Seersport?
First, the process would be that we would have to withdraw from the district, okay? That's number one, because RSU3 is just not gonna let us, I rephrase that. I don't believe RSU3 can just let us walk from RSU3. We would have to apply to RSU20, which would be Sissons, Stockton Springs, or RSU71, Belfast, and the other four towns. They would have to accept us, and they may not want us, we don't know. And, and we could have our own municipal school district, just the Town of Brooks, we'd have our own school board, that school board would put together curriculum, all the things that is done now, and it would be focused on the Town of Brooks and those people.
I just wanted, because knowing what, being on the committee and what we've talked about, and hearing some of this, I think there's some confusion over this $20,000 number. And what that number is for is to be able to, if it's needed, to pay for the committee to run numbers and get this educational plan in place, and do that research, and get attorneys involved if necessary about, you know, the deed reverter clause and things like that. And for those of you that don't know me, I actually work as a finance director in a municipality, and I'm very familiar with money, and I'm very conservative with money. And I would say that I'm cheap like Ray, and I'm a penny pincher, I don't wanna see us spend any more money than necessary, so I hope that we didn't use that $20,000. But what that is for is not just to have an engineer come in or something like that or report, it's for this whole entire process to get us to be able to present something in November for you to vote on, to say, yes, this is actually gonna be better for us tax-wise to be our own district, or for us to go to another district like Belfast or Seersport, or we find out that it's better to stay where we're at. And we are looking at all of those possibilities. And the reason that we have to hold this meeting now and put the cart before the horse is because of the timeline that's required by the state law, that if we're going to follow this path, which is one of several paths that we are exploring as a committee, we have to do this in this order. We can't wait until RSU tells us something. We've waited on them several times for information, and they have not been very forthcoming with the information we've requested. Um, so that's, we're following what the state says we have to do as a law, and that's why we're here on this.
Can you clarify what it is we're voting on, on March 1st?
To allow the Town of Brooks to give?
Allow us to continue the withdrawal process.
Okay.
And, and this research.
Okay, because it's unclear, the way it's been stated differently is that we're not voting to actually withdraw.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. To, to look into it further.
Correct.
So, yeah, that hasn't been that clear, so.
That's what I was trying to explain.
On March first is for us to continue to put together an agreement. The Commission of Education will, will put together a committee, a municipal officer, a school board member, a member of this committee, a member from the general public. They will work together with RSU three, the committee, the people in town, put together an agreement of how we're gonna educate the children in RSU, in the Town of Brooks.
Thank you.
Yes, Lisa.
So, I understand what you're saying, that school is not forthcoming in giving us information. So, we say yes, we're gonna do this. So, are you gonna spend this money to do two separate plans because you're still waiting for them with them having no deadline of telling us what they're gonna do? So we're gonna have two plans. We're gonna have, okay, if they give it to us, when they give it to us? Or this is what it costs for us to build, and then that's not yet an option in November?
It may not be a bill, it may be we send all the kids to a different district, just like they're all going to Mount View next year.
So if you don't get an answer from that, you would come up with a solution of, this is what we're gonna do?
The, the answer of them, given this building back, if I'm concerned, and this is just my opinion, the committee would have to act on this, is if RSU three is not forthcoming with a decision on what they're gonna do with this building, then we instruct our legal people to take them to court and have the judge decide that this building is either gonna be ours or it's gonna be RSU three.
Because of the?
That would eliminate that situation.
Because of the reverter clause.
The withdrawal process at that point, we would not have anything to do with this building.
Right, I know the four horses getting tired because the cart's in front of it and we're running behind it and all of that. But seriously, we need that answer. We need to know that answer so you can do the rest of your work.
We're, if we follow the law, where I read fourteen sixty-six, okay, we're already way above, ahead of the cart, okay? Because the law only states that from here to here to here to continue the withdrawal process. We weren't even supposed to look at a lot of the other things that we were actually looking at. Because I have the same comment as you have, Lisa, is I want to know what we're gonna do, somewhat along the line, before we get into the situation.
Well, I was gonna say, we can't go down the hallways, this dark hallway, and just wait for the doors to pop open. We kind of need to see the whole vision.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, you have your hand.
Um, it's more of a statement. I just think that this process is premature to the information we have. We, we really do need to know a more clear path before anybody kind of, and myself or anyone else thinks about whether we withdraw our children from this district simply because you're not gonna get better education in Searsport, you're not gonna get better education in Belfast, neither one of them tests better than Mount View, or District Three, I should say. You're just, you're kind of thinking that we're gonna get this better education somewhere else, when that's truly not the case. These statistics you have have a very large mixture of children in them, children that should have never taken the Noeas because they're not at the level of saying what their grade is. So they should have never taken that level of Noeas to begin with. And so, I think what you're seeing is a number, and you're looking at that number saying, oh my gosh, our kids are not being educated properly. No, we have some extremely gifted, very brilliant children, and we have amazing teachers right here in this school that do everything they can to give our children an education. But I think that's where you're coming from. You're trying to say they're not getting the education they need, so we should just leave the district.
As a committee, we're?
That's not really the case.
This is only one option that is being explored by the committee.
But we're being premature, even that twenty thousand is premature.
Well, that's part of the law process, that's the legal process.
Say we're here to vote for twenty thousand so we can explore our options, but we don't need to say?
No, it's to make a plan.
Correct.
If there's one to be had, to be chosen from.
It's worded that we're here to withdraw, that we are starting the withdrawal process. What we should be doing is granting twenty thousand to the town to explore our options, not to just withdraw.
Well. Then vote yes, and we will take that twenty thousand dollars and look at all those options.
Word it differently, and I will.
I took it out of the law book.
Okay. Then I can't vote for it.
That's all I can tell you.
I can't vote for it.
I took it out of the law book, and that's all I could do is take it out of the law book. I could not write an article, well, the committee could not write an article that would go against what?
The town can bring us a proposal to spend twenty thousand dollars in pursuit of seeing what our options are.
I would love to do that for you, ma'am, okay?
Then do it.
But I can't get?
I don't know what, what else I can tell you.
Right, are you saying that?
Just, just.
Because you're starting a process that we don't have any more information on. That's, you're starting a process that you want twenty thousand dollars to figure out whether we should or shouldn't. We don't need to start that process. You can figure that out without starting the process of withdrawal.
Then, just, just give it to Howard. I'll, I'll get you, Howard.
Okay.
No problem, okay?
Because I'm fine with giving you the twenty thousand, but I don't want to commit to starting the process of withdrawal.
Then I guess my, and I'm gonna say personally, myself, this is my opinion, okay? Then get on your email or your telephone or whatever and call RSU three central office, was it nine four eight six one?
I know the number.
Whatever, whatever it is, okay? And suggest to them that they give us the information that we've been asking for.
I will.
And I'll put together, I should not. We will put together a plan that you can look at. At this particular point, we can't get any information whatsoever.
What information are you looking for?
Sir?
Time, time?
No, no.
I asked you what information you're looking for.
I'm not talking to you.
Why am I getting, why am I getting? I've, I've been quiet, let other people talk.
I'll ask this question for him, what information are you looking for?
We're looking for, the number of kids. What's it costing us? What are they gonna do with kids when they pull Brooks down and go to Mount View? They haven't been able to give us any plan whatsoever of how they're gonna educate those, those kids other than put them on a bus and take them to, to Mount View.
It's an existing school.
No. Another, go ahead.
Are you saying that the, as far as you can tell legally, the only way that you can obtain that twenty thousand dollars to be specifically dedicated to this research as it pertains to Brooks, looking for these options, satisfying what they're asking about, is under the umbrella of consider, the consideration of withdrawing? Are you saying that you can't word it without the withdrawal and still obtain that twenty thousand dollars? Because they're asked, they are asking, we want to do this, but we don't want the information regarding withdrawal included. Is the only way to move forward with that twenty thousand dollars to have it be under the umbrella of the potentiality of withdrawing? And then also, isn't that separate? You can still come back later and vote no, you can vote for this, get the twenty thousand dollars, do the data collection, and then still there's going to be a separate vote down the line of whether or not you actually wish to withdraw or not.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going out on a limb so far that even, even.
In November, you can vote.
If you vote this, this is my opinion, if you vote this down on March first, fine, okay? You could ask the select people at the regular town meeting to put an article in there to raise twenty thousand dollars or whatever number you want to, to raise, ten thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever, okay? To investigate all the ramifications of the agreement that this lady has put together. You could do that. If the select people would put it in the warrant, and then the town, regular town meeting, March fifteenth, you could take and make a determination what you want to do, okay? But all I'm saying to you is, down the line, if you decide that the information gives you the information you need to withdraw, then you are another whole year from withdrawal, okay?
Are we pressed for time? Are we pressed for time? Like, it seems like we're, we're in a hurry to do this, so I'm just curious, is there some sort of, something in the way? Are we pressed for that time?
Not pressed for time, but if you look at the timeline in this, there's so many days between all this material. And it's suggested that by November of this third year, twenty twenty-five, you make a determination to withdraw. It'll take you another six months to put all that material together, a school board and education, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna do to meet the requirement of June thirty, which is the fiscal year of the state, okay? So if you miss that, you would have to do another whole year before you could put that back together again, okay? All I'm doing is, and one of the other things that's in this agreement is debt service, okay? We would be responsible, responsible for debt service of RSU three if we were to withdraw. If we don't withdraw or wanted to withdraw in another year, there's gonna be more debt service. We are gonna be responsible as the Town of Brooks to pay our share and get nothing out of it, okay? I'm looking at down the road and how many dollars and what it's for. And if you don't want to do this, that's fine, yeah. I just, I just will walk out the door today and not come back and all that, but they're not a problem. I just want to give everybody in the Town of Brooks the ability to have a determination, yay, nay, of all the options. Just, just go ahead.
I apologize if that wasn't clear. So, say we vote yes, even if we don't like the concept of withdrawing, but you want that twenty thousand dollars because we want that Brooks specific research done, we want it compiled independently for us. You decide my want for the twenty thousand dollars worth of research overtakes my dislike of the wording. Say it's done, we get it, we get this information, we get this data compiled, we have it in hand. Do we then still have the opportunity down the line to, with having had that information and looking at it, do we still then get to say, no, I don't want to withdraw?
Yes, in November.
Yes, in November. So that is the case, so that's what I'm saying. The only, then everybody else can talk. All I'm saying is that if we vote yes on this, whether we like the verbiage or not, it allows us to open the door to get this independent research for us. Yeah, we might not like the withdrawal, but at least we got the information. And then with, in November, you can say no anyway. You have to word it like this to have its own avenue to get there, and then you can still close the door on it if you so choose, but you'll have the information.
That would, that would be correct. Yes, Howard, go ahead.
I think it's just making it too complicated. We don't know if we're gonna get the building back or not.
That's correct.
But if we do get the building back, what do we have in the building? Tell me, what do we have in the building? If we get the building back, if they give it to us, what does a town have in that building?
That would be found in the agreement.
No, I said, what do we have in that building? How much would we have in this building if the school says, we're giving it back to you?
I can't answer that, Howard.
Free and clear, we're giving it back to you. You got nothing in it, right?
I can't answer that until we come up with an agreement on what would be in this building. We gave the building full of equipment.
Right, but it, irregardless, see, it's full of equipment or it doesn't have equipment.
What do you mean in?
They give you this building back to the town. We got no money in it when they give it back to us, correct?
Correct.
So we put it up for bid and sell it, and the town gets the money and put the money back into the town and into the roads or something we can use. Why is everybody set on keeping this building that we give away forty years ago? I saw this town divided in nineteen sixties, I mean, split right down the middle over this district. And I'm sick of this fighting over the district. It's gone on for too many years. The district is there, it's solvent, they're gonna take care of the kids. If they have to bus them there, I had to bus to Mount View when I was a kid, when I was going to school up there. Raymond had to go up there, a lot of us did. Didn't hurt me any. I'm looking at it, why make this more complicated than it is? If the district gives it back to us, good, then give it back to us and sell it. That we're all game and help the town out that way.
Point taken. Thank you, Howard. I, I appreciate your point. I don't disagree with your point, okay? Yes, Lisa.
Can I ask a question of our selectmen that's here tonight?
Friday?
Can I ask a question of our selectmen who's here tonight?
Well, you can, but I would rather not put them on the spot too much, you know?
I, I'll be nice. So, when they were talking, when you said possibly we could have a warrant put on the town meeting, is it too late for this year?
I don't think so.
Or maybe Jane can help you out with this?
For this particular money, or?
No, if we wanted to vote this down and we wanted money for research, we wanted money to make it so we knew whether we were gonna get this school or what we were gonna do.
We actually are moving on Saturday to start the budget process. And so we can put in twenty thousand dollars and then just change the line, the line item in the warrant for what it's used for.
So do we have to come to the meeting on Saturday to get that into a line item?
No.
So can we tell you right now we want that on the town warrant?
No.
Now, don't be mean.
I want to tell you, not as a selectman, but it's like important that anybody that wants to come to that meeting is welcome. Public meetings and committee meetings just to work on that budget, but if you want to come and have a say, then come.
So we don't need to have so many people sign a ballot or have so many people vote for the warrant?
Anything on the warrant.
Okay.
If you want something added to the warrant, then there's a process as a citizen of the town to go through where you have so many signatures.
So, I have to convince the selectmen on Saturday to put it in? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, and if you bring coffee and donuts.
Not from the cafe, which you're not always.
The, the selectmen can put anything in the warrant that they feel the town needs to, you know? But as, but as a private citizen, if you want something, it's like, no, we don't want to pay, you know, labor. And you get, you know, five hundred signatures, well, then we have to listen to that.
Okay. What time is the meeting on Saturday?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
It's on the website, you can check.
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
Lisa, Lisa, I think, I think he got your drill.
Okay.
And I think, I think he's listened to people in the audience that also have made that kind of comment, yes?
So this is still a posted meeting, so it still has to happen. We can't just say, yeah, forget it, we changed our mind.
Right, there should be a vote.
Yes.
But there should be an option at the town meeting.
On March first, there'll be a vote, yes or no.
Right.
Okay, you can come in and vote it down.
Right.
It's entirely up to you, okay?
Absolutely.
But we can have an option for a couple of weeks later at the town meeting.
To raise money to put together material, yes. But we would have to go through this process again if you wanted to withdraw.
Right, or we would have more information and we might know by then whether we would have a building.
And all I'm saying to you is the timeline that's there, that we would have to be very, very capable in order to meet that timeline.
That's if we want to meet next year.
All, all this is to give the people the option, and I think we've listened to the options and we had very clearly what they need to do and want to do, okay?
Right, we think that we would rather not hurry up just to get something done.
Yes, sir.
Fast is slow, slow is smooth. Uh, my second thing is, I was at a, I was at a meeting with you guys the other night, and you specifically had stated that you had had contact with both Searsport and Belfast in regards to accepting our students. What was the result of those conversations?
I have, I have met, and Ray Quinney went with me over to Searsport and met with the superintendent. I have met with the superintendent in Searsport again. In fact, I went to a school board meeting in Searsport a couple of weeks ago. I have talked to the assistant superintendent in Belfast, and we only went through the general thing, would you take all of our students if we were to withdraw? And the verbal commitment was, yes. We have nothing in, we have nothing in, in signature or anything in time. We have decided this shouldn't be or shouldn't be. That's up to the town people, Town of Brooks.
So just for transparency, can, can future communications like that be through email so that we know how you're actually communicating with the other schools? Right now, all, all I know is, is, is one, that, that communication happened, nobody knows what was said. And two, I've been told that the second communication didn't happen by members of the group, although I was sitting there and was told that it did happen. So, again, any, any communication between, again, transparency is key. One, your guys' meetings aren't on, 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 every time I, I've been looking, the only time I, the only reason I got to go to the last one is I happened to come down to take care of some other business and I heard Ray's voice, so I went in to listen. But the meetings are not on the calendar.
That's correct.
You're, you're behind on posting your meeting minutes, right?
The minutes are posted as soon as we have another meeting.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they are.
I, I, I was on there last night.
And I think that we are a little behind, and I'll take that for a process in perspective, absolutely.
As quickly as we can put them on, they're put on. We're a volunteer organization, we have, people have other things to do.
Transparency, Ray, transparency, transparency.
This committee has been, this committee has been very transparent, as transpo, transparent as, as any committee has been. And will continue.
So will you commit tonight to posting what information you're looking for from RSU three? We need to know what you're looking for. You, you, but you told us all you have received, no information, they've been, they've been stubborn and obstinate. What are you looking for? We need a list. And your, your communications, will they be in emails so that they can also be added to minutes so that we as a town people can, can read them and know what you're up to?
I think that could be very easily done, sir. I don't think you've spoken, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, yeah, I have a question about, you just said that Searsport had like normally agreed to take our students?
They said that they would look at taking our students, they didn't say flat out, no.
Okay, so I guess?
We, we could not commit one way or the other because I couldn't, or we as a committee couldn't say that we're gonna have K through twelve, a hundred kids go to SIS, would you take us all, okay? They have room to take us if that situation was to happen.
So my question is, what would be the benefit for me? Because I live here, and Brooks is further away, our, Searsport is a lot further away than RSU three.
That's correct.
So we're leaving RSU three to go to another district with lower test scores than ours and less opportunities athletically and like from an IEP standpoint. There's less opportunity over there that's further away, and I know from meetings that I've been at before that one of the bigger concerns has been bus rides to Mountview and how long those bus rides are. Going to Searsport, those bus rides are going to be even longer. And I'm going to have to, I drive to avoid bus rides, I would have to drive all the way over there every day. What would be the, the point doing that?
You are correct, ma'am, what you just said, okay? What, what the law states that we have to do, okay, is we have to have an educational plan in honor of the commissioner to continue with the, with this withdrawal process. And that all is, is an option for us to look at. It doesn't say that we're going to do that. But in order to put this plan together and put it to the commissioner and have the commissioner either okay or not, we have to have a plan to take care of those kids, okay? I'm not saying it's the perfect plan or the right plan. All I can say to you, the Commissioner of Education is, we have a plan that we can educate a hundred kids in town of Brooks.
So as a follow-up to that, to make sure that I mentioned that we talked about before was about superintendent agreements. How, I have not attempted to get a superintendent agreement in any years, which is one of the reasons why we landed in this district where my daughter's been going to school since she was six years old. She's now in the middle school. So this would impact both of us regardless. So if I were to need to get a superintendent agreement, I would have to go through that every single year that they're living in the town of Brooks?
If we were to become a municipal school district, you would not have to have a superintendent agreement. The school board superintendent of this municipal school district would tuition. If you wanted your child to go, you would have the choice. If you want your child to go to Mountview, we would tuition that child to Mountview. We would pay eight thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, twelve, whatever the tuition rate to send to Mountview would be.
Okay.
All right? No, that, no, we're going, she's hesitant.
I'm trying to think through, like, how many parents are actually, what, I'm trying to think about, like, how many parents are actually going to be like, "Yeah, let's keep Brooks School open, we'll pay all this money to have the school open as its own separate entity and send our kids there." How many are going to say, "I'd rather just send them to Mountview out of sheer convenience because they have older siblings that go there?" And so if we're going to tuition those kids away and spend money to send them to Mountview, then what's the point anyways?
The point, the biggest, biggest point is, is you'll have the choice of deciding what you want to do, okay? Right now, you have no choice. All you do is send your child to Mountview other than the superintendent's agreement, and they tax us whatever they want to tax us, okay? If you have your own district, you can make that determination. And the biggest part of the whole deal is that everybody in this room and everybody in the town of Brooks decides that they're just as happy as they can be in RSU three, then the vote will tell us that. There's no problem. I, I don't have a problem with everybody here saying, "We want to stay exactly where we are right now." Don't have a problem with that. That's your choice, but you don't have that choice right now.
Well, I mean, I do, I could get a superintendent agreement today and send my kids to Belfast if I wanted to.
Well, if, if they would agree with that, okay?
But what's to say they would agree if I wanted to send them from Searsport over, like, do you understand? Like, that doesn't make it, that's not the point for me.
That's the choice of the superintendent, the superintendent in RSU three has decided just recently that he or she is going to be very dependent on having superintendent agreements to keep kids in this district. Yes, sir.
So, somebody correct me if I misunderstood this. So our options are to send kids to objectively lesser school districts because apparently Mountview's grades are better than Searsport or Belfast, or to send our kids to Mountview at an additional cost. Or create an entirely new school district at, let me get this straight, an additional cost. So we could just spend more money for worse options.
Yeah.
Just continue the way we have and everything is, am I missing something?
No, you're, you're right, you're right on. You're right on. Those, those are all the options that are there available to us. The only thing is, is that I've listened to the last two or three years, that people are very unhappy with RSU three in their educational process, okay, and they're unhappy with the taxes, okay? We, all we have in process right now is going to the budget meeting in, in May and cutting the budget or adding to the budget. That's the only part we have in process. All this is doing is now is giving you the option to do all, any of those things, and if you want to continue doing exactly what you're doing now, that's fine, but you have the option to do that.
But, but again, to be clear, we are talking about two, again, I'm not fully versed on what the scores are for these districts, but I have heard people attesting to the fact that Searsport and Belfast have lower test scores overall than Mountview. So why, in the best interest of the children in our, in our town, would we want to send them to lesser districts?
But at this particular point, we have no option one way or the other. As far as cost, it may be cheaper for us to be a municipal school just to get tuition our kids out instead of being under the provision of having District Three assess us. You know, we, early on, we had the thing up there of, of two hundred thousand dollars more tax dollars to RSU three, and this next year is going to be more. They're going to have debt service coming to us that we're going to look at. Just the options, and I don't just got what you just said. Somebody have a...
I, I'm going to scoot out. I think I get the tenor of the meeting. I'm going to scoot out. Regardless of how I personally feel about the way this should go, not as a select board member, as a citizen of Brooks, this committee has literally put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, made trips to Augusta. They worked their hats out to try to provide us information, and as I said, regardless of how I feel, I really respect the time and effort that they have put in. On that note, I think...
John, John, go ahead. We'll let somebody else go first. I've had lots of time. Let somebody else go first. I've had lots of time.
You've had lots of time? You, you've been too chief, go ahead.
I know where you live.
I guess, I think I can, I'm not going to overdo this, but...
Ma'am, you need to speak up, I'm sorry.
I think the Belfast School District is really good, and I have talked to people who have transferred from RSU three to Belfast and have done way better in Belfast. I think it kind of depends on their kids. And I worked in the Belfast School, and they put a lot of resources towards, like, I mean, like, social health stuff, special education. Their special education wing is amazing. So I guess, just to throw that out there, that the Belfast School District is good.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we go any further, I, I just want to say to you, we all have different opinions, okay? And it's our right to have an opinion, okay? That's all we're here for. And when you come to the ballot box, put your opinion down there, and the majority goes. All we're here is trying to get you all the information you want. We've listened to people that don't want to spend twenty thousand dollars. I don't want to spend twenty thousand dollars, okay? But in order to go through the process, that's where it is. If you want to vote this down, mass rush, go ahead and vote it down. Not a problem. I, I don't have a problem with that at all. If you want an article at Mass fifty meeting to put some money together to come up with more plans and agreements, don't have a problem with that either. Vote that down too. Don't have a problem with that.
Well, the biggest and the simplest cure is people get out and vote on the school budget. And if you don't like it and it's too high, vote it down and make them come back with another one. And if you don't like that one, vote it down. But every year, it's like it just passes through because people are too lazy to go vote.
Well, la- last year, I don't disagree with how, last year they did reduce it by three hundred and...
Three hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Three hundred and seventy-three thousand. They did do that. Yep, yep. Peter?
Raymond, you've been around these figures for a long time. And I know I'm quicker getting into the cookie jar than my brothers, but that's me again. I, I guess my question is, if, if Belfast wasn't an option, if Searsport wasn't an option, do you, do you think, and this might not even be a fair question, but do you think that, that more schools could go back to kindergarten through twelfth grade and have this school right here? You think with a hundred kids, if that was the case, you could do that?
My answer to that would be no. I don't believe that a small district would put together a comprehensive high school, okay? With basically ten kids in the grade, forty, we'll say forty kids, four groups.
I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
No, 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 I, I'm trying to respond to what you're doing. That's my personal opinion that we could not put together a comprehensive high school with the studies that need to be done with sciences and, and things like that, and advanced placement, things of that nature. I don't believe that we would have the resources or the room to be able to do that. Yes, sir.
Well, now Waldo, where do they stand on that?
All I can tell you is Waldo, I have been to three or four selectmen's meeting in Waldo. They have got a, a committee together, they have met with RSU three administration, and they have met with Belfast, and they're looking at withdrawal also. Other than that, that's just sheer rumor and conjecture on my part. That's where they stand at this particular point. We've invited them up here, they haven't come, and that's their opinion. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am?
Just to that prior point, but pie in the sky, things working out and aligning perfectly, and we did get the school back, keeping it for K through five, six, K through eight could be a potentiality, but maybe not for high school and address the options that we've spoken about for high school. But K through a younger grade could, if we got the school back, remain here, more school in town.
That would be up to the municipal school district and the voters, that they could have the K five, just like they got now, okay? I don't see why they...
It'll give us that option. It's the, it's one of the options that would allow us potentially if all things align.
Middle, middle school students, six, seven, and eight, that could be either way or whatever. As far as the high school, in my, my opinion only, just my opinion, to have a comprehensive high school would be very, very difficult to do in a small setting. Lisa, go.
What's a, what's a legal capacity of the, of the building for, as far as students are concerned?
I think it's like a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and eighteen.
Something of that nature.
Are the classrooms the American standard size of twenty-five by thirty feet with twelve and a half foot ceilings?
Probably, most of these classrooms are bigger. Standard size, I believe today now is, high school is seven hundred square feet and, and kindergarten through, pre-k, kindergarten, one plus the two is like nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, so twenty-five times thirty is, is seven hundred and fifty.
So that's basically...
So, so if you're saying it's seven hundred, that's even smaller by one student.
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
So, twenty minutes ago, when you wouldn't call me.
When you called me chief, go ahead.
Yeah, when you wouldn't call on me, I wanted to say exactly what Linda said, that I appreciate and thank all of you for the work that you've done. And it's funny, because I go to the town meetings and I come to these meetings, and it's the same people that show up. You need to get your neighbors to come. You need to come to the town meeting. You need to come to the meeting before the town meeting. You need to look at the town report before you get there and then ask stupid questions. Sorry, not politically correct, but that's my feeling. So my urge would be for everybody to, maybe not vote for this, but to come on Saturday, talk to the selectmen, get something on there, come to the town meeting, and I would hope that this great welcome knowledge of people that have already done all this work would help in the committee to that if we could get it passed. That's all I want to say.
Go ahead, John.
So is there, is there a reason the committee chose to, to, instead of just asking the question at, at a meeting as to whether or not the town wanted to proceed with withdrawal, we, we could have just asked a simple question, yes or no, instead of forcing the issue with money attached to it? So instead of forcing us with the money attached, there was no, the outreach could have just been very simple. Does the town want to proceed with this, yes or no? And, and we could have done that at the town meeting where, again, more people are likely to show up versus on a, a random Saturday in the middle of the afternoon. So it, it just, why did the committee choose to take that route instead of just going to the normal route where we could have had it at the town meeting and just had it on the warrant? Do we want to proceed with withdrawing? What, what was the decision-making process there?
The decision that we were following fourteen sixty-six.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm, I'm asking why, why you chose one or the other.
Let him answer.
Tired of you interrupting. You want me to ask, answer the question, that's all. And I'm going to answer that if you would allow me to do that, sir. We took fourteen sixty-six and looked at it. We went out and got petitions. We took the article. We looked at other people that had tried to withdraw. They've, they've used very different numbers of amount of money. I took a medium deal of twenty. The LBN, I believe, spent thirty-five thousand to withdraw, and they didn't even get beyond the commission to get to withdraw, even the vote to withdraw.
So that doesn't answer my question. My question is...
I, I'm going to continue to do this, okay?
Please, thank you.
I don't know. I took the petition to the select board and offered to do them and gave them the parameters of what we had to do. And I'm not playing this on the, the selectmen at all. We had the option of doing it at the town meeting. We had the option of doing it at a special meeting. They chose special meeting, so we could spend the extra time if needed to talk about that issue, and that's what we did.
So he didn't do it, they did.
So that doesn't answer the question. The question is, why, why did we choose to do it this? Why did we choose to proceed with the specific directive you're talking about at the state versus just a, a, a simple question, does the town actually want to look at this? That's what I'm asking. Does the town want to look at this? Does the town want to, to look at withdrawing my kids from a high school and sending them somewhere else or from an elementary school, sending them somewhere else? We could have asked just a simple question instead of creating this, this directive to go down the path you've put us on. By doing it the way you're doing, you're, you're putting us on a path. And we, instead of doing that...
For data collection?
Huh?
Ma'am.
Yeah, so why, so why, 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 instead of doing that, just give us a choice? You, you, you've chosen to put us on the path instead of just saying, "Do you want to go on the path?"
We have given you the choice to do what you want to do. This is one of the paths.
The, the, the simple, the simple path would be, "Do you want to do this path, yes or no?" Right now, you, you, you've said by a- answering yes, that's putting us on the path to withdrawal instead of just saying, "As a town, do we even care about withdrawing, or do we just want to leave status quo?"
They're trying to eliminate a step and put us on the path.
So you vote, so you come on...
But why, 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 why did we choose one or the other? That's my question. It hasn't, it has, my question hasn't been answered. Why do we choose one or the other?
We haven't chosen, we haven't chosen one path. This is one of several paths. And this is just because of how the legal statute...
Why are we, why are we forcing ourselves into a legal situation we didn't have to? That's my question.
Because if we want...
We're not in any legal situation. You vote now, it's all over. It's as simple as that. This is an option.
This is just one option. We've been exploring all options. That's why we talked to a real estate agent.
We've been in and out and have, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to be, I'll try to be mercifully brief. On the, on the very title page of the handout, the terminology starts out with consideration. That's a key word. Consideration is like having a concept without a plan, okay? It's brainstorming. It's giving your people a, a chance to ask questions, answer stuff, you know, maybe in an obfiscatory way, but maybe in a transparent way, and that's where discussion comes in. Couple of lines below that, the key word is preparation. So you can't do any preparing unless you've sat down and do some considering, and that's just like the differences between concept of a plan and programming and planning. Without programming, you don't have a plan, and without a plan, there's nothing to execute. So it's like a simple flow chart that you get in the military or if you join the ambulance company, which I hope you will consider doing, that's what you do. You look at a flow chart, you design around the worst possible case, and you go attack the problem.
But look at the second page. It's laid out what they want.
Well, it says, "Why can..." Well, it says, why consider withdrawal? That's a lot of command.
No, it says, lack of confidence. I mean, they're selling it out.
Two or three meetings ago, I suggested that we sue RSU three for the information, for the data. There are thousands of unemployed lawyers right now, let's get a couple of them.
I would love to see the twenty thousand dollars given for the research and then for the town to decide rather we would like to consider withdrawing based on the research we obtained.
Vote comes down afterward anyway, that's what you keep saying.
We're skipping a step, allowing for a step to be done in between.
Ma'am, go ahead, behind, then we've probably done this enough, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay.
When all of this started, last, well, not started. At the end of last school year, my son previously went to Morris, loved it here, staff was great. We decided at the end of last year that we were going to, ahead of the possibility of the school closing, send my son to Mountview. Our experience has been nothing short of amazing. The staff is great, so accommodating. The bus ride, not long, it's not that bad. It's like thirty minutes in the morning and they get to sit on the bus with their friends and then they go to school. The school's great, there's so many more opportunities available for them. Sending them to towns where they don't know any of the students, they don't know any of the staff, we're throwing all of the kids into these situations that they're just not prepared for. It's not fair to the children. So I just like, they're, Mountview's a great school, staff is fabulous, they care about our students, they want them to do well. And as far as the V A scores, I don't feel like the numbers record them, they don't very much. And my kids are great.
Thank you, ma'am, for the positive comment. We're not against them, do. We're not against, no, 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 we're not.
I'm not saying you, you, but.
No, we're all, we're all here for our own community, okay? Now you have a choice, now you have a choice.
We have always had the choice.
Well.
We have.
I believe you have more of a choice, but anyway. Thank you very much for coming. Yeah, go ahead.
You keep saying, multiple ones have stated, they do have a choice. It may not be easy to execute that choice, but they do have it. We are pretending like that choice is non-existent by doing.
I made the choice last year, I sent.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it, have a good evening.